Do we have it recording? Okay, we can go ahead then.
Recording in progress.
Good evening. I'll call to order the Louisville Planning Commission meeting for October 13th, 2022. With a roll call, please.
Chair Brownice.
Here.
Commissioner Moline.
Here.
Commissioner Hefner.
Here.
Commissioner Krantz.
Here.
Commissioner Osterman.
Here.
And we're anticipating Commissioner Howe's arrival.
We are.
But he hasn't arrived just yet. With that then, actually, I'd like to move into approval of the agenda for the evening with one change to it, that we move our approval of last meeting's minutes to the end of our meeting this evening. So if we can...
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Hearing none? I'll now open it up for public comment for items that are not on this evening's agenda. Do we have anybody who want to speak to something that's not on the agenda this evening? And can we double check online Zoom? See if there's any hands raised or star nine if you're on participating by phone?
We do appear to have one attendee with a hand raised.
All right, if we can open up their microphone.
Sure, that's Ms. Cynthia Corn-Musclewhite.
Hello? Do we have a name or a...
Yes, Cynthia Corn-Musclewhite. Cynthia, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, great. Good evening, Commissioners. I understand Cynthia Corn-Musclewhite, 438 Jefferson Avenue. I understand that City Council and Planning Commission are looking at work plans coming up. So I just wanted to encourage all of you. I've been really impressed by the questions of the Commission. And I hope at some point we can get really creative around and innovative. Just want to encourage you all to think about the exits into Louisville, especially on the US side of town. Our two exits, the traffic along there, and as well as signage. Like hardscape, welcome to Louisville, and what role Planning Commission can play in thinking about the EPA's downgrade of our air quality to severe traffic management at those exits, but also the opportunity that those exits give us and repurposing and reusing. And hopefully, we'll move into the comprehensive plan next year. So I guess for today, the work plan, I just wanted to encourage everybody to kind of think outside the box and let's get creative as a community to envision a sustainable future for Louisville. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other hands raised from Zoom?
Not online.
All right. Thank you very much. Seeing no additional public comment for items not on the agenda, we'll move into our continued business. So this evening, we are continuing the Resolution 13 Series 2022 as regards to Redtail Ridge Preliminary and Final Platte. We already had public hearing on this issue, and public hearing has been closed. So at this point, we cannot take any new additional information or any substantive information to be introduced into our discussions. However, we are going to be deliberating on the draft resolution for denial amongst the Commissioners. And then after that, we will either... Well, actually, that part I can read. We will then... Sorry, I'll get it right here for you. Then the Planning Commission may approve with additional conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting after we've had our deliberations. And so that's how this evening will play out regarding this item. With that then, we are going to open it up. First, we want to discuss recusal, I believe. Commissioner Hefner?
Yeah, I will not participate in this item because of a conflict of interest. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And if we get to our second item this evening, we look forward to bringing you back into it.
I hope we get to it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. With that then, we do have opportunity for kind of free-form discussion amongst ourselves. I know that you all have indicated you have items you'd like to discuss. So why don't we just begin if you want to discuss what's on your mind regarding this? You can go ahead, Commissioner Krantz.
Okay. I'll go ahead, but I have three things that I wanted to add to the resolution of denial. But before I said that, I just wanted to say that I really, just to say to my fellow Commissioners that I appreciate that in our last meeting, we talked about a lot of potential conditions that we could have added to the nine that staff had already written up. And I'm sorry that we didn't get a chance to flush those out. So I'm hoping that this leads to, this comes back to Planning Commission and we'll be able to come back to some of those really good ideas that I know that I stopped when I proposed my motion. But the resolution that was in our packet includes some, but not all of the reasons for denial that were brought up during the meeting. And so I have three that I wanted to add.
Okay, actually, I think Rob does have some information to share with us, slides? Because we want to make sure we get these rock solid.
Okay.
So that we get them tied to our purview. So can you pull up those slides?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Rob Zuccaro. I'm the Community Development Director for the city. I'm going to, I have a slide and I just want, and I just had a quick introduction. First, I want to say that City Attorney Kelly is joining us via Zoom as well. So if there are any questions for her, please feel free to reach out to her to ask a question. I just wanted to mention, as staff drafted the resolution, we did try to pull from the deliberation and discussion and then also connect that to criteria. So I just wanted to focus the Commission in on the criteria that any of your proposed conditions should relate to. And so really, this section is kind of the overarching, this is what you should be considering. And it says up here, deciding whether to approve, approve with modifications, or deny a preliminary or final platte. So it's whether it conforms to all of the requirements of this title. So that's very broad, but that's the subdivision title of the municipal code. That's Title 16. So anything that you think doesn't comply within that title, whether the platte would be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan or applicable zoning requirements. Those applicable zoning requirements could include the general development plan that is approved for the property, that helps set the zoning and any other applicable federal, state, or city laws. And then whether the proposed subdivision will promote the purposes set forth in 16420. That's the purpose statement for subdivisions. I don't have slides for that. It's pretty long, but I could pull up the code if it's helpful in your discussion and deliberations. And also, it says with the standards in 1616. Those are called the design standards. So there's multiple categories of design standards. So per the code, any findings should relate to any of these standards. So this is what you should be considering. So I just wanted to give that introduction. Happy to bring up the code or the resolution, and we'll take notes. Depending on how many changes you have, we could try to make a motion this evening that incorporates your changes or we could redraft and come back.
Great. Thank you very much. And so when we're doing a denial, we just need to tie it as much to this to make it as solid as possible. So please, if we can continue.
Should I jump? I'll just jump in with the first one of mine?
Yeah.
Because I think that this is a, this is a big one. I would like to add that the proposed subdivision doesn't comply with the ConocoPhillips GDP for the following reasons. The type and character of development, proposed uses, and road network presented in the subdivision platte application do not comply with those in the GDP document. And I'd be happy to explain this more. It might be useful.
Please do, actually.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I feel like I don't want, I'm repeating some of the stuff I said in our last meeting, but I want to do that because I think that it would be great if City Attorney Kelly could weigh in to see if this is something that is defensible and relevant. I believe it meets item number two that Rob has up on, that Commissioner, I'm sorry, Director Zuccaro has up on the overhead right now. Let's see.
So this is City Attorney Kelly and Commissioner Krantz. And for the benefit of the rest of the Commissioners, if you tie your deliberations back to the criteria, then that is going to be the most defensible action for the Commission to take. So it is up to the Commission to weigh the evidence that was received and to apply it to the criteria. So I can't really give a legal opinion as to whether or not your decision is correct or not, because it's a decision made by the Commission driven by the criteria, if that makes sense.
Sure, sure. Okay, so, but I appreciate you, your advice that this needs to tie into the code.
Well, the criteria.
The criteria that Rob has up on the screen there is what you should be focused on in your deliberations as a Commission.
Right. And I feel that I looked carefully to decide to, I think it's important to determine whether or not this meets the requirements of the ConocoPhillips GDP under number two of this, of these actions that we can take. And, well, first of all, in vetting...
Can you, are you going to talk about how or why?
Yeah, I'd like to do that. In vetting this against the GDP, I looked at the four major components of a general development plan as established in Title 17. And those, and I understand that we're only talking about Title 16 here, but the type and character development is one of those four components. And the GDP establishes the type of character of development. And this was also, and this was presented to us in the application cover letter, the transportation plan, and in the applicant testimony. These, the type and character of the development presented by the applicant does not, is not consistent with the general development plan. And another component, major component of a GDP is the proposed location of the streets. And the platte includes a street network that differs substantially from the ConocoPhillips GDP. So if it's okay, if I could just go into a little bit more detail on the type and character of the development. As I read it, the type and character of development established by the ConocoPhillips GDP is clearly that of a single-user corporate campus. This is evidenced by the wording in the general notes and the permitted use table, such as security boundary, private drives, campus-oriented childcare, lodging for employees and guests, and could be substantiated as such by looking back at the record. Also, the ConocoPhillips GDP represents a single lot, Lot A. But the subdivision platte that was proposed to us is for a flex industrial office and retail development with multiple lots and multiple tenants. So I also believe that the type and character of development described and stated in the, is also described in the GDP under, in the zoning statement, which says that it is zoned as a planned community zone district commercial with a PUDC overlay. And based on the testimony from the applicant and the definition of bioscience, the proposed development would more closely fit a commercial and industrial zoning. I understand that the main point of a platte is not to give us the uses, but those are required to be stated in the preliminary contents section, LMC, Louisville Municipal Code 161250M. So I'm not aware of anything in their code that states that I cannot apply this information in vetting the application against the relevant zoning document. So that's my first point. It doesn't comply with the type and character of development. And just my other main thing is that the proposed location of all streets coordinated with the adopted general street plan for the city is established by the general development plan. This, the application platte that we reviewed included a street network that I felt differed substantially from the GDP. First, the GDP states that the roads represent internal private drives. And although the words, there are words that say that the drives are subject to modification, I don't believe that means that the fact that they are private is subject to modification. And the application materials also included several mentions of the fact that the ConocoPhillips GDP called for campus drive to be routed through Paradise Lane. And the application that we reviewed describes campus drive exiting just north of the fire station, which I think is a significant departure from the general development plan. So I would like to propose that we add to a resolution of denial that this doesn't comply with this applicable zoning document. Thank you for listening to my whole description.
I appreciate the long description, actually. It's very helpful.
Thank you.
Can we check in with Commissioner Moline if you had any thoughts on this? So as far as we, if we want to move forward with this, we can kind of have a straw poll to see what we think about this being added on to the motion for denial. So at this point, I don't have any, personally, I'm okay with adding that as an additional item to the motion of denial. So I'm curious, Commissioner Moline and Commissioner Krantz, as to your thoughts on that?
Yeah, excuse me. It's probably no surprise to anyone. I probably won't be voting for the denial resolution. So I'm not opposed to, I'm not opposed to changing it if that's what's of interest to the people that will be approving it. So...
Yeah. That, thank you. Appreciate that input. That's where I'm at as well. So... Commissioner Krantz? Sorry, Commissioner Osterman?
I guess what I'm just, I'm just trying to follow the criteria that we've been given. And so it sounds like the point that you're raising is more its alignment with the GDP. And so I'm just not 100% clear that that is considered an argument or a criteria that we can, that we can add.
So, yeah, Commissioner Krantz, can you...
Yeah, I think that Director Zuccaro indicated that that is an applicable zoning requirement, compliance with the GDP.
Yes, the GDP that was adopted, the GDP document that was adopted, the 2010 ConocoPhillips Campus GDP. So it should comply with the provisions of that document.
And then, and then can I, before we get too far,
we got word from Commissioner Howe that he is not going to be able to make it tonight. So there's only four voting members this evening who will be here. So you could continue deliberation. And just based on the vote from the last meeting, I'm anticipating that there could be a two-to-two vote. So I think it's up to you on if you, I think it's, I would, I'll put in a plug just to get more discussion going. And Commissioner Howe can watch the video and come to the next meeting. But if that vote stays the same, but I would like to hear so we can continue drafting and continue to try to move this along. But I wanted to let you know that.
Yeah.
And then if I could ask real quick, Commissioner Krantz mentioned three conditions she wanted to add, and I only recorded two. So I'm not sure what I missed, but I can reiterate what I heard and you can clarify.
Actually, those two were part of the first one. It was all having to do with not complying with the ConocoPhillips GDP.
So those two...
So that was the other two, those, the... I also...
But the character and then the roads.
The character and the roads are the reasons, the primarily reasons, and that I don't believe it complies with the GDP.
Right.
I think that's pretty important in how the applicant decides to move forward, whether or not we include that.
And Commissioner Osterman, so the reason why this is okay is because of the number two and the phrase, their applicable zoning requirements, where the GDP falls under that umbrella.
Yeah, okay.
At this point, even though it's not, like, when we think of zoning, yeah. All right. Excellent. Do you have a third?
Okay, I have, I also wanted to just add that I didn't think that it complies with Section 161230, the preliminary platte processing part, because that, though it doesn't say that you can't propose a preliminary and final at the same time, it does pretty clearly suggest that a preliminary and final platte should be done at the same time. And in the applicant's cover letter, they did include a modification request. And that modification request was for hearing the two at the same time. But I don't believe that this met the modification criteria that were in Title 16, that there has to be no reasonable alternative. And I think that it would be a benefit for us or for City Council to see a preliminary and then a final, so they would have a more organized presentation of the information.
Okay.
That was my second.
All right. So we can discuss that a little further?
Sure.
So the City Attorney has weighed in on this, as have staff indicating that it's totally okay. So for them to have a preliminary and final concurrent with each other. So how does it, so I guess, how does that tie back to our criteria?
Yeah, they, in their cover letter, they're asking for a modification, which is an exception to the requirements in Title 16. And I believe they were asking for a modification to section, to this particular section, which was the preliminary platte processing. Pull up that, I can pull up that letter real quick to read what they're, but I thought that because they're asking for a modification, it should meet the modification criteria.
Okay. Commissioner Osterman, what's your sense on this one? Or do you have any more questions?
I guess I'm inclined to follow the findings of the City Attorney.
Okay, yeah. Commissioner Krantz, do you find that it would ever be appropriate to have a preliminary and final at the same time for, like, a totally different issue?
I do. I think that this, I think that it was a little bit difficult for us in our, you know, three hearings to how information kept coming in, and I didn't feel like we had all the information at one time. So I feel like it would be beneficial for Council, especially in an application this complicated, to break it up into preliminary and final. I understand they're not required to do so, but they're required to, and my question, I guess, then becomes, are they required to request a modification in order to do that? Or are they just not, are they just allowed to do so? Because they have requested a modification request, and a modification request is subject to more than, okay, you're allowed to do it. So that's why I'm asking.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt. Can you go ahead and pull up that letter? I can't because I've got this up here, because I'm only aware of one modification request, which was to the block length requirement.
It says here, description of each modification request. Can I read it?
Yes, please.
Okay. It says, it says, description of each modification request, and there are four. And the second one says, "A final platte for a portion of the overlay property is being submitted for review and processing prior to developer receiving approval of the preliminary platte for the overall property. Applicant understands that the approval of the final platte is dependent on the approval of the preliminary platte for the overall site." So because they're stating this as a modification from our code, I was assuming that this was asking for a modification from 161230. And, which is the preliminary platte processing procedures. And so I was just asking, does this, I did not think that this meets the modification criteria.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. And then I think City Attorney Kelly has her hand raised.
Oh, great. Thank you. If we can open her microphone?
Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to reiterate that staff and I have reviewed this matter, and a modification request was not required regardless of how the applicant stated that in their application letter. In my opinion, the requirements for a modification request are not to be applied to this procedural question. And, you know, I can clarify that if necessary. But, you know, the conclusion that we drew is that the code does not prevent an applicant from seeking to process a preliminary... is that the code does not prevent an applicant from seeking to process a preliminary and final plat at the same time. And when an applicant requested that, we needed to have a very good reason to tell them no. And there's not a clear reason in our code to tell an applicant that that process is not available to them. You know, I think we've all seen the downside of a complicated application being run concurrently, preliminary and final plat, but I don't believe that that is a reason for denial of the application at this point. And, you know, would encourage the commissioners not to add this type of a condition, because it doesn't clearly relate to the criteria in 1612075.
Thank you. Commissioner Moline, your thoughts on this issue, please?
Yeah, I guess, again, this is not a resolution I'll be voting for, but the, I guess, in this instance, I'm gonna side with the, I'm gonna, the city attorney perspective on this is one that I would follow for whether or not to include this in the resolution.
Okay, thank you. I'm also in that same spot right now, so is it okay?
I totally agree now. I was confused by what took priority.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. All right. Any additional, so discussion of the motion of, so I would like to continue with the discussion this evening, and if we get to a point where we have a vote and we're tied, then we'll, well, at that point, we could, we have, we have a choice, actually, right?
If there's a tie vote, we would probably ask that you then just continue the deliberation until there's another, until Commissioner Howe is present.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So that might happen, but I think we should move forward with the discussion if that's okay with you both and Commissioner Moline, if we continue ahead with the discussion this evening. So additional discussion of the motion, please, sure.
And the final thing I wanted to, I was, wanted to suggest changing was something that Commissioner Howe had mentioned last time in the planning commission finding that it does not comply with LMC Section 160420K. He also mentioned that it didn't comply with B. And that is to provide the proper arrangement of streets in relation to the existing or planned streets and to the comprehensive plan. That was just something, so I was just, I thought that that's something he might have brought up, because I think we missed that part in what he stated.
So, and this ties back to our.
In the resolution that's before us, we have that it does not comply with 160420K.
Okay.
But he said B and K. And I would agree that it doesn't comply with B either, so if it's possible to add that back in, I would suggest that, or we can just leave that discussion for him. I do agree with it, but.
All right, so can you, can you restate that again, the 1604B portion of it that we've perhaps inadvertently?
To provide, B, 160420B says that it's, okay, sorry, you got it there.
Right. And so how do you find that the proposal doesn't meet, I mean, since these are all planned streets, how does it not meet that?
I believe.
So how does it not find proper arrangement of streets in relation to existing or planned?
I was concerned about the location of Campus Drive being really, only a 740-foot distance between the two intersections and how much wiggle room we had in there. But I'm willing to just let that go. I was just mentioning it because that was something that I just had in my notes that Commissioner Howe had mentioned.
Thank you for bringing it up. So my thoughts on that one specifically are that every traffic engineer that has looked at it has said that that was the best location. So on this issue, I'm also not really strong, I'm not comfortable with tying it to that because, because we don't have any alternate paths for that street. Clearly Campus Drive completion is a goal for many people within the city, and when everybody unanimously, professionally, who are trained in this area, said that's where it should be, I didn't see an alternate way around that, so I don't know. Commissioner Osterman, if you had any thoughts on that? Commissioner Moline, maybe we can bounce that one off you as well?
Yeah, I'll let Commissioner Osterman go first if she'd like.
Sure.
Thanks. Yeah, I don't think I have anything to add on that. I'm just noting that in the draft resolution, it already refers to 160420K, so it sounds like it's just part B that is not there. I don't feel strongly about including that additional piece.
Commissioner Krantz?
I just wanted to say, I just went through, I just went through the recording and listed all the things that were, things that we had mentioned for reasons for denial, and that was one, but it's not, I'm not gonna jump behind it.
All right, all right. Commissioner Moline, did you have any other thoughts on that, or?
Nope.
Okay, great, thanks. In that case then, I'd like to let the B addition, the potential addition drop if it sounds like you're okay with that, so, all right. Additional, yes, sure.
Thank you. So I think that in the draft resolution, the three main, let's see, parts A, B.
Is your, I'm sorry, is your microphone on, or maybe you need to pull it closer?
Yeah, I probably need to pull it closer. Is that better? So I was just saying that in the draft resolution, I found that the three main parts of Title 16 that were referenced, I found those to be conform with, with the discussion we had and the three major concerns with the application. The only, there was one that I wanted to suggest, and then a second, which is more of a question, because it would be related to our discussion around recommendations, basically the fact that Planning Commission can make recommendations regarding the amount of public land dedication. So I'll raise that second.
Okay.
But the first one that I thought could be added to the resolution was related to another design standard in the code, and so specifically Section 161620, which is related to drainage areas. So I can, I can read 161620, Section B, where it states that drainage areas wherever possible should be left in a natural state, and no encroachments shall be made on the natural channel area. And so I was just going to offer that up as a suggestion where, based on the evidence, based on our deliberation, it was my opinion that the application does not conform with that section of the code either. And that's related to the grading of the property that will be happening and how it will be grading areas that have natural channels. So, yeah, so that's pretty much, does that, is that clear?
And then it ties, yeah. So you're suggesting that we would add an additional condition, and then can we get some language surrounding that?
So I think going, going to what's been drafted by staff, let's see, so it mentions complying with the following standards set forth in the LMC Chapter 1616, and then it lists the different standards. So my recommendation would be that we add.
Then we just jump to this, to add that.
Uh huh, to add that, yeah.
All right. Commissioner Krantz, your thoughts on that?
I would agree that makes sense.
Commissioner Moline?
You know, I'm, I think it's, I, so let me just say, I appreciate the concern around this. I think it's, I don't know, when you have, when we want to see a roadway in this area, there's gonna be encroachment into the drainage way by this development. I think it's, it's, it's really challenging. So I don't know that I agree with this, I don't know that I agree with it, but I'm, again, fine with it being included into the resolution. It's a resolution that I probably won't be supporting, so.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'm not certain that it's as solid as I wish it was, but again, I'm in the same boat as, I'm okay with including it in there, and, because we want this document to reflect thoughts that we have had, so if that's important, then let's, I'm okay with including it. Commissioner Krantz?
Yeah, I just want to say, I also think it's important to include because I think it's upon the applicant to demonstrate that they have a good reason for altering the drainage courses, you know, and one of, so I would think that that would be good, it would be good to have it in there so that they could present that to City Council for consideration, because there's going to be such considerable regrading of the site.
All right. Excellent, all right.
I would just say I didn't see, I must say, I disagree with this part of the, I just didn't see that same level of grading in the, in the particular drainage that's gonna be reserved as, as kind of the open space and park area. I just didn't see that, the same level of grading that raises that concern for me. So, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Were we talking about just the park area? I thought we were talking about the entire site.
Well, the drainage areas.
The drainages.
Right, so the B, it's up on the screen right now, drainage areas, this is what we're tying it back to, wherever possible should be left in natural state. So if we're, if we have a road going through there, Campus Drive, and we also want a bike path in there, and then, then something's gonna have to change. So in this case, is it really, is there an alternative to that? I'm not certain of that either.
The developer also needs to comply with stormwater, stormwater compliance, drainage regulations, so, yeah.
And I think that, that's, those points are well taken and well understood that any time there's going to be construction of roads, construction of bike trails, there has to be grading that goes along with it, and that that could have an, that could be done in areas where there are natural channels that would be destroyed. So I guess more where I'm thinking that it's not in compliance with the code is that, and I may be wrong, but it seemed to me that there wouldn't be, that the natural channels that currently exist, that none of them would be maintained, was that, so essentially that any natural channels that currently exist, due to the need to construct roads and bike paths, it wouldn't be possible with the way in which the developer has proposed, or made their proposal through the application.
Right. And so I think, right, when we, when we parse words from the screen here, right, it begins, wherever possible should be left in natural state, and it's the gray area of that wherever possible that we're looking at and wondering, is there anything more we could squeeze out of it, wherever possible?
And so I understand with, with what they're proposing as development, it's just, it's not possible, right, so then.
That's what I heard, but we can include it.
I wouldn't mind including it because it puts, it would just allow them to explain that. I think it's a good point for City Council to review, and if they were able to explain that there were no, that this was to the extent possible, I think it would be useful to have in the resolution, but.
Great, all right, thank you. I want to, Director Sukaro, I want to check in with you to see if we're giving you enough solid language at this point? All right, great, thank you. All right, additional thoughts? Yeah, please.
So then the second piece, this might be more of a question, because I'm not sure that this fits, given that our resolution is a resolution of denial. But we had talked a lot in the meetings about the amount of the public land dedication, and my understanding is that Planning Commission is in a position where we can, we can make a recommendation about the size of the, of the land dedication, the type of land, I'm looking for my language here on that. But in any case, so, I'm not quite sure how to, how to ask this, but it's, it's in the spirit of trying to reflect that there was a lot of discussion and a lot of interest about having a larger land dedication than what the applicant proposed. But since this is a denial, is that something that we could include as language as, I'm not sure exactly how you would frame that, but does that, does that make sense?
So I would say that if you think it doesn't comply with the standard because it's not a large enough amount or the right mixture, or in the right location, you can make that as a finding that you don't think it complies with the requirement in the municipal code. I think as far as recommendations, you know, it's really just why we're approving or denying, there can be recommended conditions to City Council if you're recommending approval. So I think it would have to be why you're recommending denial based on that.
Okay, that, thank you, that's helpful. Then in that case, I think the suggestion, the suggestion would be to add language that, that notes that Planning Commission also did not find the application to be in compliance, given that it did not dedicate a large enough amount of public land, and specifically in reference to land that is north of Disk Drive.
This is City Attorney Kelly, and if you could relate that back to a criteria to assist the planning department in drafting that, that would be very helpful.
Yes, let's see, looking at my notes here.
Can we bounce back to the criteria on screen? That may be.
So, well, I guess, yeah, I'm not sure that this is the right part of the code to reference, but I'm seeing that based on Section 1616010D and E, Planning Commission can make a recommendation about the location, the type, or the amount of the public land dedication is.
Was that referenced again?
That was 161610D and E.
Good, is that, so this E, is that the E that you're?
Let me make sure that that's the right, D and E, school's right, towards the end. So in Section E, let's see, it's the one, two, the third sentence that starts with, "The need for additional open space, park, and recreation areas shall be based on the following factors: the city's comprehensive plan, topography, drainage, vegetation, and other physical conditions, the type and density of the proposed development." So it would be in reference to that section, that the current application, the proposed density of the development, and the current state of the land's topography, drainage, and vegetation, those would be the reasons for there being a justification for a larger land dedication.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, it's a little bit confusing how E is written, you know, as the need, as we can consider adding it. And it's hard to, the wording to say that we are not complying with something that we is, is kind of difficult, but I see that, I think that there's a way to add that to, um, the resolution of denial, letter A, um, by simply saying that it does not comply with LMC section 161610D and E. And I think we could just say that, add the words that the applicant has not demonstrated that the proposed subdivision adequately preserves the natural features, wildlife habitat, habitat and vegetation in the property, and then to just add another sentence in there saying that the amount of open space, um, is not adequate to meet D or E. Does that work? I'm not sure if I'm moving too far.
I think that my muddy waters, actually.
Oh, that would make, okay.
I think, because we're kind of talking about quantity and quality.
Right.
Right?
Okay, so it would have to be a separate one. Okay. Yeah, I could see what you're saying there.
I would kind of lean towards, I mean, as, as much as I would love to see more, um...
So... I, I'm reading the language in E again. I have the same question as Commissioner Asterman. How is that a requirement?
How is which a requirement?
The need for additional open space. It's not stated as a requirement in our code here. So with, yeah.
This is City Attorney Kelly. It would be helpful if the commission could deliberate on why, the why behind there is inadequate and why open space and why additional open space should be required based upon the factors in subsection E.
And I think personally, I'm, I'm at, as much as I would love to see more open space, because there's different areas of code that specify quantities, while we're given a little bit more leeway here, they have provided more than they're required. So at that point, I'm left to wonder, so in here, the why, to try to answer the why question, what is, other than we want, what is the, looking back to the language of E, how do, what's the why in there, um, that would drive us to want more than what they've provided or proposed in their current proposal, yeah?
I, I mean, I, I would argue that, um, the factor related to vegetation, um, I think you could make the argument that the land that is north of Disk Drive that hasn't been developed, that, um, that, 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 um, keeping it in more of a natural state, it is, is what the request for additional land dedication is trying to achieve. Um, and, and then the other factor that's mentioned is the density of the proposed development. And so, um, given, given the density of, of what's currently being proposed and, and just the, um, the, the foot, the very large footprint of it, um...
And just as a language note there, so right, density, it's not particularly dense, right? Because it's, it has a large footprint, yes, but it's not particularly dense because it does also have a lot of single-story buildings. So just to bolster the why, to try to hone in on it.
Yeah.
So I think what I'm hearing you say is the why is, is it more related to D or, or E? Um, right, the must be preserved to the extent possible? Or is it really because of, is there a, well, if we try to look at the sentence backwards, right? So, uh, is there something in the comprehensive plan, the topography, the drainage, the vegetation, or other physical conditions that create a need for additional open space? Please, yeah, share your thoughts.
Yeah, I, I don't want to change what Commissioner Asterman is saying, but I believe that under D, we could add an additional reason being that there's not enough clustering and there's not enough open space to meet the type of development and additional. So we, we've been denying this because, um, the natural features, vegetation, are not being preserved to the extent possible because there is, it is possible for substantially more clustering to allow for more private or public common open space, or public open space. So I'm proposing a change to what she said.
Okay. So jumping back to your original thought, and Commissioner Molyne will jump in with you here in just a moment. So the inclusion of, so your original thought, can you ground me back in that again?
I, I think Commissioner Krantz did a much better job than me framing that, but, but essentially, um, that, that's in line with the original thought, that, um, that there's a need, um, that it's not in compliance, given that there's a need for additional open space in order to, um, in relation to section D, to preserve to the extent possible more of the vegetation of the area, the area north of Disk Drive that, um, hasn't been developed, um, and to cluster more.
So if we jump back to what we currently have listed in the motion, uh, to item A, right, which addresses this, is that, is there, is there something in addition to that? We've kind of, we thought about throwing in E, E there, uh, section E, but is there a why with an E that further bolsters the current, the currently worded one?
Um, I'm just trying to think, yeah.
Commissioner Molyne, I'm curious as to your thoughts on, on, so to me, there is kind of a quantity and quality, kind of different issues on, on one level? I'm wondering if you're seeing those?
Um, I, I definitely do, um, and again, this is going to be one of those issues that I, I, I didn't find that the, um, proposal was deficient in this regard, so I'm not going to be able to help, um, come up with the, you know, I'm not going to be able to, to assist, um, coming up with something to add on to this resolution for denial in this regard, I'm afraid.
All right, thank you. Yeah.
I appreciate the, I appreciate the perspectives, um, so...
Certainly, yeah.
I, I think if, yeah, if, if the consensus is that, um, given the code, we can't find a way of, um, justifying it to include it in the resolution for denial, that I, that, that's okay. I guess if it were a resolution for approval, then it would be much easier because we would have a resolution for approval with a condition or a recommendation that X amount of land be dedicated. So it's more just for it to go on record to, um, to city council, that there is, that Planning Commission feels like, or, or at least some members of Planning Commission feel like there should be a larger land dedication, but...
All right. Commissioner Krantz?
So would it be okay to add to part A that, the part about the quantity? Just to add that it doesn't, um, I'm talking about part A of the, of the findings?
Right, of the motion.
That the applicant has not demonstrated that the proposed subdivision adequately preserves the natural features, wildlife habitat, and vegetation of the property, and they have not demonstrated that it has, um, clustered the buildings to the extent possible to preserve those.
I'm hesitant to jump into clustering language, but I'm curious, Director Zakaria, um, the, if we look at it as currently worded in, in letter A, um, does the inclusion of the reference to section E, um, does that muddy things for you? As we...
Right, I, I think I probably can't weigh in on that. That's up to the commission and your deliberation and how you interpret the code and view the code, if you think it's applicable.
Yeah, all right. Thanks. So where are we at? Do we have, do you have language that you want to propose at this point? Or Commissioner Krantz, did you have something that summarized this issue also?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure that I have better language than what I've already brought up, but I, or I could just try to restate.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, can you, Commissioner Krantz, how are you feeling about this? As far as...
I think that with a few words, we could add the, the issue of quantity to the, um, to compliance with 161610D.
Okay.
I think it's relevant because how much you preserve is very important to wildlife habitat and the vegetation. So I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's enough to preserve any, preserve habitat, and I've said that before with relation to viable prairie dog towns, that it's just too small for, to preserve the wildlife habitat. So I think that we could add the word quantity to that last sentence.
Commissioner Asterman, do you want to kind of read your proposal again and see if it, if we should have it as standalone?
Sure, um, because I guess what I was understanding was that if we add it to, um, part A, uh, then it just kind of muddies that, muddies the water a little bit. So I think, I think if, um, if we're able to add it in reference to section E, um, which talks about the need for additional open space, um, shall be based on the following factors: city's comprehensive plan, topography, drainage, vegetation, other physical conditions. The language I would propose then would be around there being a need for additional open space, um, based primarily on, on vegetation and that the, that the land north of Disk Drive has not been developed. And so, um, there's an argument to be made for, um, leaving more of that space as open space to, again, the word preserve, preserve the vegetation.
Okay.
In that area.
All right.
Does that work?
Yeah, we can, we can move forward with that. We have an open mic somewhere, but, um, Commissioner Molyne, are you okay with, with there including that in the, in the motion?
I think he's actually developing business and maybe getting intimidated. It's all conjecture.
Ms. Muscley, Caroline, Cynthia?
Yes.
Can you please mute yourself?
I can't. You...
Oh, okay. Let me take care of that for you. There we go. Thank you.
All right.
Um, let's see here. Sorry. So, uh, again, I, I'm, I think I'm fine with that being included because it seems like that was an important part of the discussion of the, the Planning Commission members that are going to be probably most likely voting for this resolution. Again, it's not, um, it's not a, a, a part that I agree with, but, um, yeah, it makes sense to include it in this, yeah.
All right. Thanks, and I'm kind of sitting in that similar spot.
Okay.
Yeah, so, all right. Director Zakaria, does that leave you with enough on this issue to be able to create this?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. Additional items? Nothing else? All right. Excellent. Um, so then at this point, um, we can move forward, actually.
I, I do, I wouldn't, sorry, Chair Braun, I say, I wouldn't mind speaking, are we going to get a chance to speak?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we start with that now? Yeah.
Okay. Um, I don't need to go first, though, so, but I, I would if, if that's easy.
Sure. Well, why don't you please, please run with it?
So we're, at this point, we're done?
It's kind of our closing thoughts.
Okay, closing thoughts, we're done talking about changing the resolution at this point. And, and, um, so in that case, I'll just, I'll just mention, um, that, that I won't be supporting the resolution, in, in particular, I don't agree with the paragraph A part. I do believe that the proposal adequately preserves the natural features, wildlife habitat, and vegetation of the property, given the parameters of the approved GDP and the proposal's provision of open space in excess of the required dedication. And then based on the record for this application, including the environmental reviews and the impact studies of the site. And then the other thing, I, I just, more broadly, I'm, I'm not supportive of denying the, the proposal because I think it leaves us in the same place where we are now. And, and that's a parcel of land that's important for Lewisville's open space, transportation, and comprehensive plan goals, and, and maybe, maybe, uh, the possible retention of a hospital. And the, this resolution will set us up without a clear path for seeing any of those goals realized. And so since it'll remain a private property at this time, my understanding is that the landowner could be doing, um, land use activities such as prairie dog management, tree removal, agricultural cultivation. And so some of the things that our citizens wanted to see protected on the property, we're not going to be on a path towards formally protecting those at this time, um, because we're recommending denial. And so, so those are kind of the, those are some of the things that, that concern me and, and yes, I certainly have reservations about the project overall, as I've said before, but that, it's, it's those reasons that are going to compel me not to support the denial resolution tonight. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Kind of some closing thoughts before we move into voting?
Go ahead real quick. I, I'm not sure I understand what, um, Commissioner Molyne means by how they will move forward with preserving things if we deny this proposal.
Do you, do you want me to answer?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Sure, yeah.
Well, I, I guess by not have, the, the property stays as private land, still we don't move forward with any open space proposals, we have nothing. It stays private. That's my, that's the point I'm making, is that without a path towards, you know, moving towards something, the land remains private, there is no public open space. And, and then again, as a private landowner, they're allowed to do tree removal, prairie dog management, all the kinds of things that private landowners can do, they can do those right now, they can currently be doing those. And so my, I guess my idea would be, I would like to, you know, I, I'm not going to support the denial because I'd rather see us moving in a direction where we can, um, kind of, you, realize some of the goals that the town has in this property, so, does that help?
I would love to respond to that. I support the resolution of denial. I, I didn't understand what you had said, but now I, it's very clear, I do agree with you that we will not have those public land dedications if we don't move forward. But I don't believe that this is the right way to move forward because I don't think that this complies with the general development plan. And I think with the level of changes and, and the difference in what they're proposing from what I believe is allowed under the ConocoPhillips GDP, I don't think a subdivision plot is the way to do it. If we want to have a coordinated community design and contemporary planning principles, we're going to be putting off a lot of these criteria, a lot of the values in our comprehensive plan to the PUD phase. By moving this forward too quickly, um, I think we're going to have a lot of, not just a not very coordinated design, um, but also we're going to have some conflicts. I'm, I'm visualizing conflicts of, of uses that will be, that could exist later on. So that's why I'm supporting the denial.
Thank you. Commissioner Asterman?
Uh, so just in terms of closing comments, um, I'll just say that, that this has been a really, really tough application for me to review. Um, I, I've been really torn on this one, and, and I think at the end of the day, for me...
And I think at the end of the day, for me, reviewing all the evidence, listening to the public, really scrutinizing the code has, has influenced my position to recommend denial. But it's, it's, it's really tough because I would, I agree with Commissioner Moline. I really would like to see this parcel of land developed and recognize, it's, it's just really disappointing, recognize all the ways in which it would add value to our city. So I, I, I'm leaving this, this decision just pretty, pretty torn and just disappointed that, that we weren't presented with a, with a stronger application.
Thank you. If, if I thought that a vote to deny would guarantee us a better project, then I would be voting to deny. But this, I've been torn on this too, right? This is not what I wish was going to happen out there. But unfortunately, that's not how the process is designed. Whatever is going to be built on this land in the future ultimately is rooted back in 1978 when the city annexed the land. We know the kind of recent history. In 2010, City Council approved the ConocoPhillips GDP that we've been discussing. And that essentially ensures that a property owner has the right to build approximately two and a half million square feet on this land within the planned community zone district commercial zoning. This doesn't expire and it carries through to any owner. Also, as we know, after negotiations with the applicant in September of 2021, City Council approved the GDP, which in April of 2022, Lewisville voters overturned. That GDP would have included 93 acres of public land dedication, transportation demand management plan, which included shuttle service to the nearby bus stop, paid for by the funding mechanism there, a sustainability commitment plan, which would have required lead silver certification of all buildings, and electrification of all HVAC and domestic hot water. The site would have also met dark sky requirements and included a minimum of three megawatts of onsite solar PV energy production. While the current proposal inexplicably does not include some of the same sustainability goals, it does include 155 acres of public lands, of which our code only technically requires 37. This proposal would also provide potential trail connectivity through the Paradise Lane open space to the Admore open space. The developer would also pay for the extension of Campus Drive during Phase One of the buildout. Like most of us, I've become accustomed to the land sitting empty. Though some would prefer to see this entire property transformed into open space, and others would prefer to see a little bit more dense, heavier, transit-oriented, multi-use development with permanently affordable housing, that's not what our comprehensive plan or municipal code actually support, unfortunately, at this time. I don't support the additional, the current proposal without additional conditions, particularly as they relate to green building certification and, and the discussion regarding the applicant potentially paying for some portion of the expansion of the intersection at Highway 36. But the planning commissioner's role in this process is not actually to design the project. I'm concerned that outright denial of the current proposal runs the risk that we might lose any number of these benefits that are simply not required by Lewisville Municipal Code. So as such, I, I don't support the motion to deny. With that then, I would entertain a motion. I'll leave that to you.
And I just want to confirm, and City Attorney Kelly, please, if you could confirm, it would be good just so we're all clear, but it's definitely my understanding that a 2-2 vote, a resolution cannot pass for or against, so we would need to have either a 3-1 vote here tonight, or we would have to wait for a different mix of commissioners or deliberation to sway somebody's vote. So can you confirm that, City Attorney?
Yes, sure. That is correct.
Great. Thank you. With that then, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to move forward with the resolution for denial?
So that's a, a resolution 13 Series 2022 recommending denial of the Redtail Ridge preliminary and final plat? And a second?
Second.
All right. And a roll call vote, please.
And just to be clear.
Oh, go ahead, Rob.
I was just going to say, I just, your motion should include incorporation of the amendments to the resolution. And I could summarize them, but I do have good notes, so I think you could just incorporate by reference. There's three changes. I, I won't get into a lot of detail, but. One was non-compliance with the general development plan. And then non-compliance with 161620B related to the drainage areas not being left in a natural state. And then 161610E, the need for additional open space in different locations based on vegetation of the land. So generally, there would be additional findings related to those three items. And then if there is a 2-2 vote here, somebody could also make a motion to continue this to the next meeting, which is, I'll have to look up the date. It's the first Thursday in November is the regular meeting date, if we have a court, or the 10th.
Second Thursday.
Second Thursday.
Can we pull up that date? Thanks.
It's the 10th.
Excellent.
So, and sorry to interrupt, City Attorney Kelly, you may have had something different to say.
No, thank you, Rob. That was exactly what I was going to say.
Can you just then amend that to include that? Yeah.
I'd like to amend the motion or mo.
Include the, include the provisions as discussed.
I, I'd like to motion to include the provisions as discussed, the additional three changes to the resolution.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. So a yes is to deny. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Krantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Moline?
No.
Chair Brown Eyes?
No. So it does not carry, so I would then entertain a motion to continue it to our November?
10th.
10th meeting?
Second.
Oh, motion.
Motion, second. Great, thank you. And we'll do a roll call on that as well.
Commissioner Krantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Chair Brown Eyes?
Yes. Thank you all. Yeah, this has been the hardest thing ever. With that, we'll take a break. We'll make it a seven-minute break. Thank you all. Thank you. If we can reconvene, please. Thank you all. So if we can reconvene? Great, thanks. All right. I will now open the public hearing on request for a planned unit development Murphy Express. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. Next, we will have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the planning commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined the meeting by computer, telephone, or in person may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to use the raise hand function if participating by computer, star nine if calling in by telephone, or filling out a speaker card and providing that to staff. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. No pooling is permitted. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing, and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I have described? Seeing none? Do we have proper notification? And then I'll come back to disclosures. Oh, actually, I want to note, Commissioner Hefner, no, I'm sorry, yeah, Commissioner Hefner is with us? Can we confirm that, actually?
Dietrich, you're muted.
You're I am. I'm back. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks. Welcome back. And do we have any, I'll just go ahead with disclosures right now. Does anybody have any disclosures on this item? Seeing none? All right. Thanks. Public notification, please?
Yes, Commissioner. The item has been publicly noticed on appropriate timelines. So it's posted to the Daily Camera on September 25th and posted in required notice locations and mailed out with property postings by September 28th.
Thank you. And if you'll proceed with the presentation?
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Ellie Hassan. I haven't been in here in a while. I'm planner with the Planning and Building Safety Department. And the item before you is Resolution Number 14 Series 2022, which recommends approval of the Plan D and Development Amendment at 525 McCaslin Boulevard that would allow construction of a new automotive service station and convenience store with eight pump fueling stations and canopy structure. So just for a little bit of context, this property is located on the west side of McCaslin between Cherry Street to the north and Dillon Road to the south. And the site's about 1.5 acres in size and is zoned for planned community commercial. The property is within the Centennial Valley Parcel L filing number one subdivision, which was originally platted in 1996 and was replatted in 1997. Parcel L is part of the Centennial Valley. Parcel L is part of the Centennial Valley General Development Plan, which was first established in 1983. And in 1997, the city approved the Bank of Boulder and Rite Aid planned year development, which included both the property at 515 McCaslin as well as 525 McCaslin Boulevard. A building that was approximately 13,650 square feet was initially approved to be constructed on the 525 McCaslin portion of the PUD for a Rite Aid business. The applicants are proposing to demolish the existing structure to construct a new 2,824-square-foot automotive service station and convenience store building with eight pump fueling stations under a 4,842-square-foot canopy structure. The primary site access is off of the private drive, which, if I have my pointer up here, let's see if that's visible. So the primary access is off of this private drive over here, which abuts McCaslin Boulevard to the east on this side. And then there's another shared property line to the north, which does have-
Can you point on that, on that screen?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Over here, that'll make it easier for everybody, I think.
And it does have, so over to the north, there is another access point that's accessed from the private drive to the west. And this is shared between this property and the property to the north side. So the convenience store building is proposed in the center of the lot, which is located over on this area and is marked basic, and basically faces out to McCaslin. The parking areas are provided next to it on the east and the south side, provides 16 spaces, which exceeds the 13 spaces required in the CDDSG. There are three bicycle parking spaces, which are seen on the north, as well as an ice machine, as well as a ice vendor and propane tank vendor as well. The campy and fuel pumps are east of the main convenience store building, and they're separated by the parking spaces in the 35-foot drive aisle. Over to the west of the main retail building, there's an underground fuel tank area that's located here with a new access drive, as well as a trash enclosure area and air and vacuum stations for cars. The stormwater detention on the site is located on the east side of the property, which is along this area over here, and is along a variable with drain adjustment. One of the other things to note, too, is that there is a new attached sidewalk being proposed on the south side along the private street, which is being proposed along this area over here. And there are some existing benches being recycled from the original site and used again as pedestrian medis in a similar location. And as mentioned previously, this retail building is going to have its entrance facing out, so this is, if you were looking at it from the McCaslin Boulevard area on this site. The east elevation is facing out onto McCaslin. And the building materials on this building are going to be primarily a brick veneer and also on, basically on the first two-thirds of the building. And then the last third is going to be what they call an aluminum composite material or ACM metal. And that's going to be on the upper area. And then the very top of the building is capped off with textured sheet metal that's painted to match the ACM below. And one thing to note, too, is that the east elevation does have expanses of storefront windows, as well as an emphasis on the entranceway through the use of these brick columns in a more red ACM accent. The west elevation has a matching form and has a matching similar form that you can see a little bit behind here, basically to provide emphasis on that side. And the north and south facides, facades, this is the south, for instance, does have some variation in materials, as well as some massing changes through those material transitions to provide a little bit of variety over there. And if desired, a physical material board was provided by the applicants, and that can be distributed to Commissioners if you would like to see the materials more closely. And moving on to the landscaping that's being proposed, since this is an existing site, there are mature trees that exist, especially along the McCaslin Boulevard side. And based on the tree survey that was submitted by the applicant, there are two trees that are along McCaslin that are supposed to, that are proposed to be removed, and these are located in red here. So the first one's up in this corner, and then there's another tree closer to the access drive over on this private side. And there are 10 trees total, so there's two over on McCaslin, then the other eight are associated with removal in order to make way for the site improvements. And the two trees proposed along McCaslin Boulevard are, they are removed on that area, but by retaining a majority of the trees along the area, it is hoped that it minimizes the visual impact of the drive aisles, parking areas, and other improvements on the site. And as a note for the landscape plan, too, the number of existing and proposed trees in the landscape plan does exceed the CDDSG requirements for both perimeter and parking lot landscaping, which offsets the loss of the mature trees on the site. There are plantings that are also proposed along the west and north sides of the retail building, as well as some additional planting that you can see along this edge between the drive aisle for the fuel canopy and the McCaslin Boulevard side where the trees are located. And upon review by staff, one thing that we did note is that the site does require new EV charging spaces, which are required in Section 17.20.170 of the municipal code. And based on the tables in this section, the site was deemed to be considered retail and falls under tier three, which had, which for a site with 16 total parking spaces, will require one EV installed, two EV capable, and two EV-ready spots. Again, based on the existing proposed parking spaces. And because of this, a new amendment was added to the resolution, which includes a condition, and this is provided to you both on the dais, and we do have a copy over to the right here if anyone in the public would like to take a look. And based on this project, staff analysis finds that, we first wanted to point to the compliance with the general development plan, since that does regulate uses for the site. And staff analysis did find that the automotive service station was a permitted use in parcel L1 of the Centennial Valley GDP. And this is based on reviewing the latest GDP from August 2015, which defers to Section 17.72.090 of the municipal code for its allowed uses. And within this section of the code, automotive service stations are listed as an allowed use, but it is subject to the prescribed performance and design standards, which are located in Section 17.72.130, which staff did analyze as part of the staff report. So staff analysis does find that the application is compliant with the PUD criteria in Section 17.28.120 of the municipal code. And as previously mentioned, we do find that the automotive service station development standards in Section 17.72.10.130 was also compliant as well. And looking at the CDDSG, we did find that the site was compliant with those standards. And based on this information, staff are recommending approval of Resolution Number 14 Series 2022 to construct a new 2,824-square-foot automotive station and convenience store with eight fuel pumping stations with a canopy at 525 South McCaslin Boulevard, with the add condition that prior to the city council public hearing, the applicant shall amend the PUD to include the required EV installed, EV capable, and EV-ready parking space designation pursuant to Section 17.20.170 of the municipal code. And prior to the meeting and after the staff packet was published, in that interim period, we did receive nine letters of opposition that were provided to you on the dais as well. And we do have a copy for those over to the right in our bulletin board for members of the public. And there was a 10th letter that was received between when this meeting started and at this point as well. So, and those letters were all in opposition of the project, and applicants and commission could read those letters further to understand the reasons that people were opposed to it. And this concludes staff presentation, and I am happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you very much, yeah, we do open it up to Commissioner questions of staff at this time. And Commissioners Hefner and Moline, just kind of wave your hands a little bit if you want to, if either one of you wants to start. Commissioner Moline, you unmuted, or? Do you have any questions of staff?
No questions, no questions.
Commissioner Hefner, go ahead.
Go ahead. Yeah, I just have one question, which is, it would be helpful for me to understand as far as the PUD amendment that's in front of us. How, how should we view that in light of the fact that this is an allowed use? You know, I think the comments we saw in opposition largely oppose the project because it's a gas station, because of the proposed use. And I'm just wondering what staff's view is on the fact that this is, appears to be an allowed use within this zone district, and what's our latitude to consider the use as part of the PUD amendment?
I think I'll defer to Director Zeprow for that one.
Sure, yeah, so the, the PUD does not define the use, that's defined by the zoning code or the general development plan. So the PUD is really just implementing zoning and design standards and the performance standards within the code. You could, you would have to find that it is not an allowed use, but in, in staff's analysis, we did find it to be an allowed use. So if you see something different, that it isn't allowed, then you would have to make that finding within the code.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Additional Commissioner questions of staff? Commissioner Krenz.
Can you, could, can you show us where in the GDP the allowed uses are? Can we take a quick look at that? It was one of the attachments in the back of that. And then also, is, do you have any analysis of the McCaslin small area plan and how this fits in?
So before you is, so this is the latest August 2015, or 2015 version of the GDP for Centennial Valley. So you can see over on, so basically the parcel is located here under parcel L1. And, yeah, it's over on this side. And if you look through the planning areas that are here, they're designated uses, so parcel L is listed both as retail and research slash office, as well as down here, it is listed as corporate use or retail and mixed use. And there is a provision that does mention specific descriptions of permitted uses and densities for each parcel. Do, there are amendments that are found in the GDP, there are amendments to the restated development plan, which we have gone through, and from my findings, it looks like a majority of this portion, basically parcel L1, parcel H, and parcel L2 were mostly part of the Fifth Amendment. And from what we've seen in the Fifth Amendment, it looks like the only time that automotive service station is listed as prohibited is for parcel H rather than parcel L1.
Can you say that one more time, because I didn't have, because we don't have that amendment, the Fifth Amendment in front of us, or it wasn't part of our packet, so would you mind repeating that?
Yeah, so there are several amendments that have been done over the years to the Centennial Valley, usually associated with development of different parcels in it. And from what staff found, so I believe there's nine or 10 total. And when we look through them, the Fifth Amendment mainly addressed parcel L1, L2, and parcel H. And within that document, and within all the documents in general, just with a general search, we didn't find anything that prohibited the automotive service station use in parcel L1. The only part where it was specifically mentioned as prohibited was in parcel H, which is to the south.
Yeah, thank you, and I would just mention, how we get to the point of the service station being allowed is if you look on the map for L1, it says commercial slash retail. And then the zoning code says that any general development plan that's referenced as commercial, any of the allowed uses in Section 177290 for commercial and office uses are allowed. And then within that list of allowed uses is a service station, subject to the performance standards, I believe. Do you know what section that is, Ellie? But I think that's how we get there.
Yeah, it's Section 1772.
And it's 12, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's number 12 is the automobile service stations.
Yeah, the overall section of the performance standards is 17.72.130, if I remember correctly.
Commissioner Krenz, additional questions of staff?
Just, what does it say under section and on parcel H? Just what is that zoned?
Parcel H is also commercial, retail, and in the, one of those development amendments that are mentioned in that footnote, there are significant restrictions on parcel H that we have, that we have found that don't exist for L1 or L2.
Okay.
Additional questions to staff at this time? All right, thank you very much, appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Ask the applicant up. With your name and address, please.
Yes, absolutely. Good evening. My name is Jeff Weider, I'm with Galloway and Company, we're here helping Murphy. We are at 5500 Greenwood Plaza Boulevard in Greenwood Village, Colorado, 80111. Good evening, Chair, Mr. Chair, good evening, Commission, good evening, staff and citizen, citizens who are all here tonight. Kind of a late night, getting a quick start, hopefully a quick finish. Ellie did a great job in her presentation, very thorough, so I don't want to like rehash some stuff, so we'll go through this pretty quick. Up here, hold on, let's see if we can. There, make it a little bigger. I just want, we just wanted to add a little bit of context to this site. US 36 is to our south, to the tune of less than 2,000 feet away, with a significant amount of traffic, passerby traffic on the roadway systems there. And that's what Murphy really aims to catch, right? Convenience stores and fueling stations are a convenience-based business. Not necessarily a destination-based business, right? So what they see is they see this traffic, they see a nice parcel, that it can be redeveloped, and that's what they're looking to do. On this, in this case, again, we've got some infill development. No revisions or additions to the public infrastructure, it's all there, ready for us to tap into. We talked about its proximity to US 36. We're not changing, we're not proposing any change to vehicle access, we're not asking for a full-motion access where there isn't one already, you know? And then obviously that mature landscaping on McCaslin remains, which was significant. We moved to the next slide here, it's just a little bit more zoomed-in version of the site plan, a little bit colored up, so you can see the difference between the pavement, the buildings, and the landscaping. Vehicle access that Ellie mentions taken all from the internal drives. The existing access points that are spread about throughout the overall master plan development exist, we're not asking for any changes to that. That gathering space on the south will remain in its general location, we're having to move it a little bit to keep it. And then that pedestrian access, you can kind of maybe see it here a little bit, under the shade of that canopy trees extending from east back to the west. Right now, it, it ends about the first curb cut out there, let's see if we got this laser pointer. So right, right now, that sidewalk ends about right there, and so we're extending it all the way along back into the development. So here again, just to add some context, here's a mature buffer of landscape along the frontage. This is, if you're standing out in McCaslin, this is what it would look like looking into sight, both looking southwest and northwest from McCaslin. Just again, make sure you understand that the buffer is out there, and we're not trying to disturb it at all. And then we get to the most, the final and most important slide is that we do comply, the use complies, the development plan or the PUD plan itself and the proposed development complies with the criteria set forth, the applicable criteria. We're here to answer any questions, we've got a bivvy of, of talent here for Murphy as well, if you have operational questions that I can't answer, they sure can.
Great, thank you very much for your presentation. And why don't we go ahead, if you can pass the sample board to the Commissioners who are here. Once we open public hearing, we'll enter the sample board into, yeah. Great, thanks, you can, you guys can just take it and hold it there for a while and check it out if you want. With that, then, I would open it up to Commissioner questions of the applicant. There we go, thank you. Commissioner Moline, please, go ahead. There we go.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions of the applicant. One is, I'm, I'm curious if what their thought is about the proposed EV charging stations. And then I, I am also curious about if they considered utilizing the existing building for any, like, could any of the existing building be utilized? I'd like to hear them talk just a little bit about that. So yeah, maybe those are two to start with.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
So the first question about EV charging stations, we understand its applicability. We understand that it's a codified requirement. We're still researching the language that is associated with it, it's, we understand it, it is codified through the building permit process. And so that's where it would have been kind of mandated. From an operational perspective, the experience of Murphy is, is that it, it, it's a, it doesn't generate any revenue, right? But they understand that it's part of the code. So we'll, we'll work- So we'll, we'll work through that. We understand there's a condition on the, on the approval. And that's, that's something we'll go back to the drawing board and see if we can fit it in. And then the second question was about reuse of the building. I mean, it's a, it's a nice building. It's greatly oversized. We'd be spending a ton of money on maintenance and energy costs as opposed to doing the building that they, they know, and they know well, and they know how to maintain well, and they know how to operate well.
Great. Additional questions of the applicant? Commissioner Hefner, do you have any questions at this time?
None from me, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Grads?
I have a couple further questions, but I'm not sure if these are for you or for staff. One of them is it has to do with the circulation of traffic. I understand this will allow, add 1,000, approximately 1,000 vehicles per day to the area. And it's, I'm just concerned about making, making sure that traffic wouldn't back up in the left turn lane going into, coming from 36 and turning west into the parking lot. Have you done a traffic analysis? And I'm also, I also am not sure if you can exit to the, if you can, you can't exit from your facility directly out to, onto McAsland to go back to 36. So I'm wondering if you're directing traffic back to Centennial Parkway in order for somebody to head back onto the highway again.
Yeah, so it's kind of a small exhibit here. We'll try to give it a shot. So this, no, let's move, let's move one more. The main access directly to our south here, down here, does not allow a left turn out, okay? So it allows the left turn in, it allows a right turn out. So it can, you can hedge yourself, basically, coming out of the development at that access point. The internal roadway system here, as you head north, comes up into Cherry Street at a location that is a right turn only, I believe, back to US 36. So you could head then to US 36 and head north at that point. If you head south here, same, same kind of situation, where you head down to, I believe it's Dillon. And Dillon is a right turn only at that location. If you move back towards Lowe's, then there's a series of connections at Dillon and Cherry as well. Those are, I believe, full motion. So you could go west on Cherry or east on Dillon at those respective locations. So amongst all of that, those trips are spread out amongst all of those movements, right? Because people are wanting to go in each and every direction. But the most safe movements are, they're kept safe by not allowing that left turn onto US 36. That's all kind of, it's, I mean, it was, it was analyzed years ago, and it still holds true today.
Okay, so, but, but because the gas station will have a lot, probably have, well, you, you analyze it, it'll have about 300 more trips per day than the Rite Aid had. And I don't really, I don't personally recall how it was with the Rite Aid. But will you have signage to make sure, will it be really clear to people exiting the gas station that they are to exit? I called it Centennial Valley Drive, you called it, I called it Centennial Parkway, you called it Cherry Street. But I think it's the same road we're talking about. Will they know to go that way? I mean, is that part of your proposal to?
We currently don't have wayfinding signs proposed. It is something we could, we could provide. We, again, going back to the original discussion, although the ITE says that gas stations have a planned trips per day and different times of the day, they operate again based upon convenience, right? So it's not a traffic draw necessarily, as it is saying, the traffic that's already on US 36 just now will turn in because there's a facility there. And it's not creating any more traffic there. It's just kind of allowing, getting them to turn in then to use the facility. So all this movement that, that you see, or any movement that you see, is that people learn the, the idea real quick that they can't turn left on US 36, right? That they, if they want to go north on US 36, they're going to have to go through the development up to Cherry or Centennial, and then get over to US 36 and head north. It is a, it's, it's an existing development that we're, that has always been that way.
So we have no concerns about the left turn backing up from McAsland into the gas station with the additional 300 cars coming from, above the Rite Aid coming into a gas station?
No, not from a queuing perspective, especially given the rest of the development and the current state it's in, no.
Thank you.
Additional questions of the applicant? I'm curious, has, has Murphy Express ever had fee-based electric car charging stations? Maybe we can invite somebody else up, yeah? With your name and number.
Yes, Stephen Oliver, Director of Development for Murphy.
They all pointed at you, by the way.
Yeah, I know. 3827 Holland Avenue, Dallas, Texas, 75219. Actually, in 1997, our first Murphy store opened in Chattanooga, Tennessee, and it had charging stations. They do not exist today there because they were just never used. We do have a sister company based in the Northeast called Quick Check. They have about 170 stores, and they are installing electric fueling stations. So we do have experience with it. We don't generally have a lot of experience with it in a Murphy, in a Murphy environment.
And, and the environment difference being, is it a format size, or?
Part of it's a format size, the other part is demand. It's gasoline hydrocarbon-based product is going to be the fuel. Majority sales for probably the next 20 to 25 years. And the profitability right now, in terms of, there just isn't any. What we will end up doing here is we'll probably assign it to a third party, have them do the installs, and they would end up being responsible for it.
All right. Any additional questions of the applicant? Commissioner Grads?
What are your proposed hours of operation?
We always ask for 24, and then as we evaluate it post-opening, we may reduce them. So, but we are going to propose 24 hours.
Additional questions?
I'm sorry, I had a list, but I don't want to stop anybody else. I mean, I just, I'm sorry. I, I was wondering, I'm, I, I'm not really super familiar with gas stations, but I, did you, I know that you've, that this has been approved with the, the road network and entrance and exits has been approved with our fire department. But how about an emergency plan, the emergency planning for spills or in case of a fire? Have you coordinated with our fire department on, on those issues?
Fire Department was part of the referral, or part of the review.
Did their review include emergency prevention or emergency plans?
They review it against our adopted building codes. They may review it against other standards that I'm not aware of. I can't really speak to what all the fire district reviews against. It's a separate district in the city, of course.
If you have additional questions?
My last, my last question is that I understand that there's different types of storage tanks, and you didn't provide any details about the storage tanks. And I'm wondering if you could discuss whether these are the type that would be inspected yearly? Or are these are the ones with the secondary containment that are inspect, that aren't required to be inspected as often?
So they are, they are second, double wall tanks. They are fiberglass. It's a total capacity underground of 51,000 gallons. So it's a 25,000 gallon tank and a 26,000 gallon tank. All the pipes and, from the tanks to the dispensers are also double walled. There's containment underneath the dispensers, there's containment at the fill tubes. We do annual pressure tests, right? So we do, we, we do, we do those tests annually. Even if they may not be required for a double wall, we do them.
Great, and where is the tank vent located?
Go ahead.
They are right, this guy, that, right. So the tank farm is here. And then this is the vent right there.
So the tanks are placed, in this site, they're actually placed away from vehicle traffic, where consumers would generally go, and then around the dispensers into the stores. So there'll be no interference with the fuel truck when they're, they're offloading the fuel. So from a safety perspective, it's probably more safe than most.
All right. Any additional questions? All right, then. Seeing no additional questions of the applicant, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Why don't we take a short five-minute break this time around? And then we'll open it up to public comment.
Elizabeth. Elizabeth, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Oh, sorry about that.
Yep, no worries.
I just had a question.
You know, we're still recording. Can, can I call you directly?
Sure.
You gonna pause it?
It's a question about, about the recording, actually.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause it.
Okay.
Recording stopped.
But I, I'm just curious, we, is there only one camera display?
Yeah, we've got an issue internally with the ability for the, the system to display the lectern PC. And so we're having to manually do it from the control room in the back to zoom in to what's, yeah. So we're working on getting that fixed. It's not ideal.
Okay, I just couldn't, I couldn't tell if, if I was viewing something right, or?
Nope, it's not you.
Okay, all right. Yeah, because we couldn't, we can't see the lectern or, or any of the crowd or anything. Okay, all right, thanks very much, sorry.
No worries, no worries.
Okay.
If we can reconvene, please. Thank you all very much. All right, I will now open up public comment. As we do that, if I could have a motion to add the, the public comments that were received by email into the record?
So moved?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. And then also to add the material board into the record?
Aye.
All right. We'll take a motion in a second.
Recording in progress.
Oh, thank you. All right, why don't we add it back in? Because we weren't recording, we're gonna just repeat that really quickly here, thanks. So a motion to include the public comment received by email as addendum one into the record?
So moved?
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And then a second motion to add the material board into the public record, into, yeah.
I move to add the material board into the public record.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Thank you all. Please limit yourself to three minutes. No aggregating of time, if you begin with stating your full name and address, please. And if you can help me navigate the online and real person, let's start with a real person.
Sure thing.
Oh wait, you're all real, I'm sorry.
First up, please, Sherry Summer, and on deck is Mr. Tim Stalker. Oh, he's not here, oh, sorry.
Sherry Summer, 910 South Palisade Court. So sustainability is the top stated priority of the city of Louisville, but as you realize, our building codes have not been updated to be able to address some of the issues that could come up with a proposal of this type. And so I'm kind of getting the feeling that this is allowed and that this, Murphy's is a very large, large company, and they kind of, like, it makes sense, I'm not criticizing it. They just kind of put gas stations that are identical anyplace in the world, anyplace, not the world, but the country. And yet, we're dealing with the context, and our context is we just suffered through the largest fire disaster in Colorado history, and we have severe out of attainment, our air quality is severely out of attainment with EPA standards. And so I see on the Murphy's website that they like to work with communities to support them in disaster relief and other helping hands. And I realize such a big company may not be able to have much wiggle room, but I would like to plead with the applicants that you would consider some things. You, the application mentions the roof is flat, so that solar could be installed. Consider having it solar-ready. I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about all things that could also be good for your business, that would help you make more money, which is the obvious stated goal. Make it solar-ready, because retrofitting is more expensive. The roof should be at the minimum bright white. That will reduce cooling costs for you in the summer and make the area more comfortable. This area is a place where we will have more electric cars, many, many more. Our new Boulder County Commissioner is going to put, make a push for more electric vehicles. You can charge for that, you can charge for that. So please consider putting in the wiring, because it'll be less expensive to do it now than retrofitting. And then you could just swap them out with your third party. I have a question about the trees, the ones along Dillon. I'm not sure why the southeast corner is going to be removed. And I was thinking if the curb was just a little farther west, maybe you could save those two trees on, on, I mean, on McAsland. That would be great. I would like to ask how, what kind of vegetation you'll be using, if it'll be native, drought tolerant, pollinator friendly? Because those would all benefit our community and also save you money on water. You know, there's also the problem of fugitive emissions when people are fueling their cars. And I noticed Costco just changed over to new nozzles to make those less problematic for the society and the community. So I'd like to ask if those could be included at all. I want to thank the applicant for their straightforward presentation. They do meet all of the criteria, but I would like to plead with them to consider the needs of this community in particular and, and try to move the needle in your corporation to better practices. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Catherine Smith, followed by Josh Cooperman.
And, and then maybe after Ms. Smith, we can jump, if there's any hands online from Zoom?
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Catherine Smith at 608 West Street in Louisville. And I'm really here tonight to talk about two things. One is, I was listening to NPR last night and they were saying that in just 60 years, it's going to be as hot in Louisville as it is in Texas today. And I was kind of struck by this timeframe. And I realized that I am among the people who are just kind of going about our daily lives, not advocating for change. But today, I'm here to say that I think the Planning Commission has an important role to play in climate change. I know we're looking at what we're going to try and accomplish in the coming year. And I would ask you to think outside the box. What can we do as a city? And to reduce the momentum that is behind the climate change today. And I'm speaking to you today in the context of a gas station without taking into position on whether or not it serves the needs of our community. But I don't see how it can in the biggest picture. And I do think that we need, as a community, to look really carefully at our design standards, our zoning, our comprehensive plan, and a lot of the legal documents and standards that this body is working with. And the last thing that I want to say is, I just feel like, like climate change, where the whole subject of traffic seems to be on a track where the actual on-the-street impact is not taken into account. And I don't understand quite, I know that today, at rush hour, McCaslin is completely stop-and-go traffic. So you add 1,000 cars to that, and it's just bigger lines to get through McCaslin. I don't know what's going on with traffic, but I do think that as a town, we really, really need to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody on Zoom who...
So far, no. No hands raised online.
All right, thank you.
Joshua Cooperman?
Josh Cooperman, I live at 216 Griffith Street. Please excuse me if my composure wavers during my public comments, for this application makes me absolutely furious. Why? This proposal flies in the face of the scientific consensus...
Actually, if we can ask you to turn it down a little bit, please.
On climate change.
Thank you.
To meet the conditions of the Paris Agreement, namely to keep global warming to within 1.5 degrees Celsius, there can be no further development of fossil fuel infrastructure. Why else? This proposal calls for the profligate destruction, not even deconstruction, of a perfectly reusable building. Why else? This proposal has no long-term economic viability, particularly in a city with great adoption of electric vehicles. And I could go on, but unfortunately, you cannot directly reject this application for any of these reasons. So let me explain why this proposal fails to meet Louisville's municipal code. First, PUD Criterion 1728120A, number one, an appropriate relationship to the surrounding area. There is already a gasoline station and convenience store directly across McCaslin Boulevard. Another such establishment is an unnecessary, inappropriate use of a parcel. Second, PUD Criterion 1728120B, number one, development shall be in accordance with the adopted elements of the Comprehensive Development Plan of the city. This proposal conflicts with aspects of the Comprehensive Plan's vision statement, with a few of the Comprehensive Plan's core community values, with the Comprehensive Plan's vision for redevelopment of the McCaslin corridor, and with four out of six of the development principles identified in the McCaslin Boulevard Small Area Plan. I refer you to my letter for the details. Louisville's current development review process does not provide much, if any, opportunity for community feedback to development applicants. So I will take some of my time now to provide such feedback. I advise the applicant to withdraw this development application with immediate effect. Then, go read the International Panel on Climate Change's sixth assessment and the International Energy Agency's report, Net Zero by 2050, and ponder thoroughly the moral and ethical implications of this development proposal. If the applicant does not heed my advice, then I will organize the following opposition to this development application. First, I will preempt City Council's consideration by lodging a citizens' initiative banning the construction of new gasoline stations in Louisville. Concurrently, I will mobilize the community in droves to oppose the development application if it manages to come before City Council. If somehow, City Council manages to approve this application, then I will launch a referendum petition to nullify City Council's approval. If all of these efforts fail, then I will found a local chapter of Just Stop Oil to plague the Murphy Express with protests. I do not oppose redevelopment of this parcel. Quite the contrary. This parcel, as well as the parcels directly south and west, are ripe for redevelopment. But we need sensible, sustainable redevelopment that meets the needs of our community, our region, our world. If the applicant or another developer returns with a sensible, sustainable redevelopment plan, then I would be the first to offer my support. Right now, however, Louisville needs its planning commission to stand up for the community's vision, for that mission, to ensure that redevelopment is planned, is well-planned, by rejecting the proposal before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Still no hands raised online.
All right.
Next, Ms. Tiffany Boyd, followed by JoJo Fulmer.
Good evening, Tiffany Boyd, 550 Grant Avenue. I should just say what he said. But I will say a few more things. Coming in about the electric charging stations. It seemed as though the applicant didn't feel as though it was necessary. One of the things that's happening right now with the Inflation Reduction Act is there are gonna be lots and lots of opportunities for people to get rebates on electric cars. And I am one person that lives in Old Town Louisville that does not have a garage. And I have an electric car and I depend on these electric charging stations around the community to charge my car. So I will be using the electric charging station if this applicant is able to get their building passed. And I think that we are on the cusp here of a lot of interesting things happening globally, nationally, locally. We have set a precedent for residential building codes. We're on the cusp of setting a precedent for commercial building codes. All of these things are gonna be happening at the state level eminently. And not only is new construction going to be required to meet these rigorous standards for helping us with reducing our greenhouse gas emissions, but in addition to that, retrofitting is coming fairly soon. The roadmap proposed by the state of Colorado has retrofitting on its near-future docket. And these things are gonna be happening with municipalities across the state. The state is gonna be starting to mandate them and it's gonna become a top-down thing. We need to heed the climate crisis and do our very, very best to be on the forefront of helping our community transition to the electric cars that are going to be on the roads, the infrastructure that is gonna be needed to support, support these electric cars. Many multiple-family apartment complexes right now do not have any charging stations. These people who are going to be getting discounts through the Inflation Reduction Act on their electric cars are gonna need a place to charge their cars. So instead of reluctantly saying, okay, I guess we'll do five and we'll outsource it to some other company, how about embracing this opportunity to make Murphy's a place where people can come and charge their electric cars? So if we don't all start getting excited and involved in electric car infrastructure, this is just going to be... You know, fossil fuels are going by the wayside and we need to be on the forefront of helping our next generation with cleaner air. I would also concur that at some point, we should consider banning gas stations in Louisville. It's happening in California. A very, very large community, Santa Rosa, California, has banned gas stations. You know, again, back to the Colorado roadmap. We need the leadership of this Planning Commission to question the status quo and to map out for us a plan so that our town acknowledges that the land use decisions that we make today and rubber stamp today will have consequences for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is JoJo Fulmer. I live at 1712 Steel Street in Louisville and I'm a junior in high school. We don't need this gas station and it is not an effective investment. Gas is being phased out, and not in 25 years. In 25 years, it'll almost be 2050, which is when the IPCC has said that we need to be at net zero, not starting to phase out gasoline. We can't imagine a world where we have not met those goals. And that is terrifying, but we don't need this gas station because we are starting to phase out of gasoline towards electric vehicles. And especially with the Inflation Reduction Act, as some of the previous people have said, electric vehicles are starting to become more prominent, especially in Boulder County. And so I know that it is probably unlikely that it will be recommended for denial, but I encourage that it is or at the very least, that there are some very large conditions to make it more sustainable, like having more electric vehicle chargers. And so, yeah, and just, I agree with everything that has already been said. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have an additional, additional speakers?
No hands are raised online and there are no additional speakers in the room.
All right. If I could ask the applicant up to address some of the landscaping and tree issues that have been raised, particularly the removal of the trees on McCaslin. And also, if you can, can you address whether it's native and adapted species or drought tolerant as well?
So let me address your latter question first. The specifications of new plant life being proposed meet the city code. We can go back and look at more indifferent drought tolerant, but we can't, if it's not an affected or unapproved plant list item, then we probably can't use it. The existing trees, the ones on McCaslin, I'm not quite certain. I think the one on the north side, we have some utilities that have to be routed into the detention pond that create a conflict there. We're, we're, you know, we were weaving around stuff, but we can't promise that we're not gonna cut into the root system. So we labeled it as a to-be-removed tree, for example, to be on the conservative side so that we don't make promises that we couldn't keep. And similarly, on the south side, to make traffic safe for, and obvious, that interface between pedestrians and vehicles, we opened up that access point just a touch and that created a reason for the loss of that tree. Does that all make sense?
Yep.
Did I get all your questions?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Additional questions of the applicant at this time? Because once we close public hearing, then we can't ask them any additional questions. So please.
Yeah. Thanks for all the public comments. And I guess I would like to ask the applicant, I mean, if, I'm assuming you've done a market analysis because I'm hearing from the public that we don't need another gas station. How many gas stations can our city support just from an economic perspective? Given we have a population of about 20,000 people, we already have five gas stations. Did you look at the need for another gas station? And how do, how do you feel this will impact other gas stations economically?
So yes, we do it, we do an analysis of this and it's based off of the traffic patterns, the movements of the traffic through the, through the area. We don't project, as I know the standards are, an increase in traffic count. And I would like to say, your, your number of 1,000 cars is 300 more per day from the previous use?
I may have been mistaken, I'm sorry, I wasn't looking at the table.
Okay. The... We do an economic analysis and this is deemed to exceed our hurdles. We do not project, or do we ever look at any impact on any other competitor?
Do you have a statistic on how many gas stations per capita can be supported in a community?
Not per se, because the business model is so different from everybody else relative to their volumes, their strategies, et cetera. But in a community of 20,000 people, you should be somewhere between six and eight. But you also have US 36 next to you, which takes significant traffic through the city of Louisville.
Additional questions? Commissioners Malina Hefner, do you have any questions? No, I see a hedging, no, okay. Thank you very much. Thank, yes, Mr. France.
I would love to hear your response to some of the comments regarding climate change and the addition of more charging capability and your strategy for the future.
So our strategy for the future, whether I believe climate change is real, is it's more of a personal decision than science. And, and your belief in science, right? I personally believe it to be real. I'll say this publicly, I have an electric vehicle on order. Okay. But it still doesn't go, as Americans are holding their cars longer and longer, gasoline is gonna be in demand longer and longer. The projection based on the EIA is that by 2050, hydrocarbon products will still account for over 40%, of motor fuel sales, transportation sales, or needs. So it's not insignificant. And you had another question, it was another part.
Just how do you feel about additional charging capacity? Because I think that our community may be different in our percentage of electric vehicle owners. I'm one to.
So the infrastructure will happen. I'm a firm believer that the free market will take care of it. That as the vehicles get built and get on the road and there's a known demand for it, there will be entrepreneurs, people like us, new people in the industry, who will come out and provide the fueling location sources that are gonna be needed. But I think it's a free economy, a free market. I don't think it's a thing that should be regulated. It will take care of itself.
And as far as putting solar on the roof and some of the other suggestions?
I can't, I, I, I'm not privy for having those discussions. I don't know that we, I don't know. Okay.
Thank you. Any additional questions of the applicant? Seeing none. I actually would invite the applicant back up to, for a closing response and closing statement to any other additional issues you wanted to address. A brief, nothing else is...
I'd like to thank the opportunity to come and present today. I'd like to thank the public for this, for their comments and the things that they've said. I did make some notes and the comments will get back to headquarters. We'll take a look at it. We want to be an important member of the community, we want to be valued. I will say that one of the things that we do well is disaster relief. And if you get online and look at the state of Florida with Hurricane Ian and Fiona a couple of weeks before, we have a very strong disaster relief effort. We are generally the last to close and the first to reopen because we prepare for it. And we do watch it and we do, we do it, we do try to make sure that everybody is safe and everybody has fuel and that we're, that we're providing the community the support they need. I'd just like to thank everybody for the time.
Thank you. Thank you. Invite a staff response and closing statement?
No comments at this time. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions of staff before we close? Public comment? All right. Any additional questions, Commissioners Maline and Hefner, before we close public comment? All right. All right. Thank you very much. I'll now close the public hearing, and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Who would like to begin? Commissioner Hefner?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. First of all, I appreciate both the staff presentation and the applicant presentation, as well as the really thoughtful public comments. I look at this, and I see two things. I see, on the one hand, this is a permitted use in the zone that it's designated as, and I don't think there's a lot we can do to change that at this stage. The other thing I see, though, is, you know, as it's before us today, the application doesn't comply with our EV requirements, and I recognize we have a resolution before us that would add that as a condition. I think my preference would be to see the application come back to us with the EV requirements satisfied at minimum, and maybe some of the additional items we heard from the public to the extent the applicant decides those are in its interest or otherwise feels like those would be a valuable part of the project. So I think at this point, my inclination would be to deny the resolution before us, send it back, ask it to come back, ask the applicant to come back to us with something that at minimum complies with the EV requirements in our code, and perhaps goes above and beyond that. You know, I take the applicant at his word, that they're looking to be a strong and important member of the community, and I'd love to see an application that really checks off some of those boxes and addresses some of the concerns we've heard.
Thank you, Commissioner Hefner. There's no thoughts? Commissioner Vance?
I think that that is a great idea, because I also have some concerns about some of the compliance issues with our comprehensive plan and the McCaslin small area plan.
Can you expand upon those a little bit?
Yeah, Mr. Cooperman had in his letter. I'm not sure how I would propose that this be addressed if the applicant were to come back to us with a new application or with a revised application, but we do have a requirement, we do have a vision in our comprehensive plan for, you know, a healthy, vibrant, sustainable economy, and maybe it would be great if the applicant were able to flesh out some of their ideas and how to achieve that.
Sure, I can go ahead. So, if other commissioners are also in favor of sending the application back and requesting the EV requirements are included at a minimum, I would be in support of that. Looking at the criteria in Chapter 17, it does seem like the applicant is meeting the criteria, so on that basis, I'm seeing the criteria being met. The one question mark that I do have would be related to Criteria 17.28.120A, the first point about an appropriate relationship to the surrounding area. I think from public comment, it was mentioned that almost directly across the street on McCaslin, there is another gas station, and so I'm not sure if number one would be in reference to something like that, like the suitability if in the immediate area you already have another gas station. So I'm just raising that as potentially one area where I could see maybe that the application is not meeting the code.
All right. Commissioner Maline?
Yeah, this is, I also want to share the, my, the fellow commissioners' comments about appreciating the staff presentation and the comments from the public, and I agree those are, I agree with those comments, and, and as I think we've all sort of said, this development, to me, also appears to comply with our municipal code. And so, I appreciate Commissioner Hefner's proposal, and I would, I would be willing to go along with that. I am not, I guess, my sense is that the addition of the EV parking spots is not, I don't, I don't know that it'll be a complex undertaking to figure out how to add that to the, to the project, and I do feel like if, for, you know, if the project is meeting the code in other respects, I guess I could be comfortable with that being a condition of approval. But I'm also open to, you know, seeing this again, and I also strongly agree with having the applicant try and make some changes to this, some proposals, that would address some of the comments that we heard from the public, the, for example, the solar-ready aspect of the canopy. So I would, I would also be in support of those things, too. So that, so this is sort of a non-answer, but that's kind of the discussion or the, my thinking process at this point, I guess.
Yeah, let's keep discussing it. I guess my initial reaction is that if I thought that not building a gas station would reduce even a half a ton of CO2 emissions, then I would be concerned about it. It's not, whether we have gas stations on two sides of the street or one side of the street is not going to impact CO2 emissions. People are going to buy gas, we know that. We might not want to accept it, but that is our reality. I also, the thought of whether it's appropriate for the setting, I forget what the language is, but to me, the fact that there is a gas station on the other side of the street actually amplifies that it's appropriate for the setting.
Right.
I think if you look at that language, it's, it does, it fits in at that point. So I'm not sure how we get from a situation where it fits in because we have proof that it fits in sort of for that area to deciding that it doesn't fit in. On an economic level, the only thing this might do that I would see is that it might reduce profitability for the gas stations. There's one gas station on McCaslin in Lewisville. If you have a second gas station, the likelihood is that the existing one is going to have to lower a couple cents, which per gallon, potentially, I don't really know, but I expect that would. Competition typically does that. And while I'm not excited about selling more gas, I think cutting profit out of it might be a good thing for the sellers of gas. So, if you think of it that way. I also find that it is used by right. What I think where we need as a community to be focused on and focusing staff time on is getting going with the comprehensive plan and getting the municipal code to give that comprehensive plan teeth. I find that pushing this off to next month is actually a waste of our tax dollars and potentially of staff time, because I don't expect that we'll see many changes. Having the condition on the resolution that they address the EV is, I think, as far as we're going to be able to get that pushed. So whether we make them come back in a month, require more use of our time, of staff time, to look at a plan that shows those spaces on, as opposed to the way the conditions were to where they have to have that available for city council when they come there, is, would be cleaner to move forward with it, is my thought. I welcome your reactions.
I'll be honest, when Commissioner Hefner, excuse me, recommended denial, I thought that it would give me a chance to address a lot of questions that I have and things that were brought up by the public. Gas stations and convenience stores, you know, have been known as areas that are, become blighted if they are, if, when they close down, they're very hard to restore into new uses. They're areas of higher crime, they're, especially if they're 24/7. It's giving our youth another, you know, place to hang out, and I'm not sure that, I think that there's a lot of disadvantages to gas stations, and I wanted to, I'm really, I was jumping on the idea of denial because I wanted to think some more about what our other gas stations are. Are they 24/7? Are there, are there more specifics in our comprehensive plan? I totally agree, it's used by right. I mean, I think that that's, but then, when do we draw the line? When do we say that we have to implement our sustainability action plan? I mean, we have these goals, we have climate goals, and adding more fossil fuel infrastructure is just, it's just really hard to do for, based on what our community is saying. Is the mechanism to ban gas stations after this one? I think that would be great, but in considering this proposal, I thought, I was hoping that denial would allow us to have a little bit more time to deliberate things and give fair consideration to what the public wants.
Well, we have time for deliberation right now, so.
Okay.
If I could, I think my, my point is maybe a narrower one, that I agree with you, Mr. Chair, that our time and attention is, is better spent on big picture items to the extent possible, but I would remind everybody that we just spent quite a bit of time and attention looking at the EV ordinance and thinking about the EV ordinance, and so to recommend approval of an application that, that doesn't quite pass the bar of something we, we just recently spent a lot of time and attention on, to me, would be short-sighted. I'd like to, and, and I don't know enough to say whether Commissioner Maline is, is right that it's a sort of pro forma, easy change to put in the, the charging stations or not, but I would sort of like to see it. And I'd also like to see, you know, maybe the applicant can come back with something more creative that feels a little less cookie cutter and a little more tailored to a community like Lewisville, where we do have lots of folks who are interested in, in electric cars, and frankly, I think we will probably have higher adoption sooner in Lewisville and in Boulder County more generally than lots of places. And so to me, it's, it is a worthwhile use for our time to, to see how that might play out and see how the application might look a little different before we go ahead and recommend it.
So I guess in front of us, we have the benefit of a hard copy of the revised resolution, which includes the condition, "Prior to city council public hearing, the applicant shall amend the PUD to include the required EV-installed, EV-capable, and EV-ready parking space designations pursuant to Section 17.20.170 of the Lewisville Municipal Code." So, there's, there's, I mean, it's, it's locked tight. That's what they would have to do. It's in the code anyway, they have to address it. So, what, Commissioner Hefner, can you describe a little bit more of what you would expect to see?
Yeah, so I guess, you know, I think that's a fair point, but I would say, council already has to follow the code, right? We all have to follow the code, and I'm not sure what our job is if we're going to pass things along that, that don't quite meet our mark, and maybe this does meet the mark for you, but it doesn't quite for me. If we're going to pass things along that we're not wholeheartedly recommending and then just put an asterisk on it and say, well, this has to meet code before it's final, I'm not totally sure what our job is. I think part of our job is to vet these applications thoroughly and make sure they are something we're fully comfortable approving, and in this case, it seems like it is, it is somewhat fundamental to the idea of having the, the PUD amended to include a service station, to think about in what ways is an automobile service station going to serve the long-term needs of the community. I just don't see how you can separate, you know, Colorado has a 2020 EV plan that, that calls for almost a million EVs on the road by 2030, and I, to me, you can't, you can't separate this land use decision from the reality that our local, state, and national government are all pushing pretty hard for EV adoption. And that's just, that's a fact of the, that's a fact of the law.
Right, and I guess on that issue, right, I don't, I don't want to spend much time discussing this, but as to where people charge their EVs, it's greatly more cost-effective to do them from our own homes, and ideally, people are doing it overnight, so at least in the current grid structure. Hopefully, that'll be changing as well. But, so, the demand for EV charging, for publicly accessible EV charging stations is going to be different than the uptake of EV vehicles.
Chair Bronis, oh, go ahead.
Commissioner Maline?
Oh, sorry, sorry, Commissioner Hefner, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I was just going to agree, but, but point out, you know, we, we did spend time working on that, that EV provision of the code, and I think that, to me, that means something.
Yep.
And, and it does. That's our, that's our condition. So what I, I mean, what I would anticipate if we pushed it off is we would see a site plan and would have five spots called out. One would show active charging, two EV-capable, and two EV-ready spots. I can, I mean, why, why would we need to see that ourselves?
But that, that could be asked of, of any application, right? Where we're reviewing the application against the applicable criteria, why do we need to see it at all if we can just tell them they need to comply and move on to city council? As a recommending body, I think we have an obligation to do a little investigation, and I, I agree, it's a line in the sand as to where that is, and I think we're on different lines and different point, different sides of the line.
Sounds good. All right.
Chair Bronis, I'm, I'm wondering, is it, would it be appropriate to ask staff what this, what, what, how they would, I don't know what the right word would be, but what, what the enactment of this condition would look like before they took it to city council?
Well, they provided us with a slide. Maybe we can bring the slide back up earlier in the staff presentation to show us what would.
So I think there's an issue of the number of spaces, and then typically on a PUD, we want to see where they're located. So the PUD would need to have notations showing the location of the EV-installed, capable, and ready spaces. So that's what we would probably want for an amendment generally.
Right. So that's what's required? That's what they would have to do to meet the condition?
I would add, these are, these are not in addition to the minimum parking requirement, so whatever's required in our parking code of those spaces, you need to have this number that's up on the screen, these five spaces designated, so this isn't five in addition to what's already proposed.
Right. So we would see a site plan potentially with parking spaces noting the location of these five. Commissioner Maline, did you, does that answer?
Yeah, that, that answers the question. I, yeah, yep, thank you.
All right. Any additional thoughts? So actually, I would like to poll the commission as to where people are feeling they're at right now for this proposal. Chair?
So I think that with the, with the amendment regarding the EV requirement, I'm feeling comfortable with approving.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Vance?
If we were going to move in the direction to approve it tonight, I would want to have If we were going to move in the direction to approve it tonight, I would want to have, I might want to consider a condition on the hours of operation and adding additional conditions to make it feel more comfortable to our community as far as sustainability is concerned.
But we need to discuss those.
So, I mean, if we're up for discussing that, I think I would prefer to.
I would just recommend if you are going to restrict hours of operation, that you cite the section of the PUD code that would support restricting hours of operation.
Yeah, I guess I'm being honest, I think that's why I was, I was leaning towards coming back to this, because I don't have that offhand.
Can I infer that we don't have code that allows us to restrict hours of operation?
I wouldn't go that far. I just think there needs to be a compelling, you know, our special review use code, for example, there's more clear connection to, because restricting hours of use, it's just not something typically we do, is restrict hours of use of a business through a PUD that's a use by right. I, I wouldn't go as far as to say that you couldn't if you found a compelling reason related to one of our PUD review criteria, same exercise we went through on the last application. I would just, it's because it is unusual, I would want it to be a really clear nexus to a criteria.
All right. I'm curious, what are your thoughts? What are the benefits? There's no residential anywhere near here.
Do, one of the letters that we received said that they live within a quarter mile of the gas station, but their concern was more related to fugitive emissions. But I am cur, I don't know that we have other 24-hour businesses in Lewisville. I'm just concerned about the trend. I don't, I don't, I don't know what the hours are of other, but it seems to me that we live in a pretty quiet town, and our small-town character, things kind of shut down. That's, that's the word I get from my, from my children. So I'm just curious what the precedent is for that in our town, and it just seems like it, it was a concern to me.
I guess, I, I would just make a, a comment, and, I mean, I guess I would say that this, we look at the McCaslin interchange as probably one of the busier, busier sections of the town. And for example, bus service is going to run almost 24 hours these days with the flat, flat iron flyer. And so this is a part of town that, and I'm sure there's traffic on US 36, on McCaslin. So this is, this is a rather busy area of town. And, and so I guess I, I could see why an applicant would think they could find a reason to be open for 24 hours. And so anyway, just, just throwing that out there for consideration. And I think the McCaslin Small Area Plan would, would support the kind of, that sort of activity level for this area.
Yeah, for me, given the location, that they, that they want to investigate whether they can work 24 hours or not, if it doesn't pay off for them, obviously, they're not going to do it. I would remind people, there used to be a 7-Eleven across the street from this area. It's no longer there. So who knows whether this will end up working well 24 hours or not? So to me, it's, that's, that's another part of it, that we leave to the invisible hand of the market, that we're not here to like, microprogram exactly what businesses do at that point in time. If it was a different location, then I'd be more concerned, yeah. Commissioner Hefner, can we ask where you're at, at this point in time?
My, my position remains the same. Thank you, though.
Okay. And so that's what, what, so then you would want to change the condition that we have regarding EVs and say, we would, we would deny it with that being essentially our, our sole condition?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't approve the resolution at all. I would, I would just deny it and ask them to come back.
Right. With, with that being the issue, EVs.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think I'd like to see an application before us that complies with the code.
All right.
Including regarding EVs. But I don't know that we attach formal conditions when we deny.
Well, we would have to do a process here where we would come back, staff would prepare a draft, as we've just dealt with on our first item. We would discuss the draft and deliberations after public hearing had been closed. We would then adopt that as our commission, our, our denial. And then, and then, and only then, they would, they would be able to come back again with the site plan with the EVs on it. So it would be rather drawn out at that point.
Right, I think the only alternative, and I don't, I think, you know, the, the applicant knowing there's a denial, you could ask if they're interested in a continuance to make revisions or a rescheduling of the hearing. So you could ask them that, or if they would prefer a resolution of denial, because that gives them other options as well. So I think you could ask which direction they'd perhaps like to go, if that's what you feel the vote might be of the commission.
Commissioner Moline, where are you at?
I could be ready to support this resolution.
All right, I mean, I also find myself in support of it at this time. I would say that I would like, when, when the applicant goes to City Council, that they address a little bit more, anything they can, related to the energy efficiency of the building. I imagine there is a story somewhat behind that. And address the potential for solar-ready canopies and other issues like that that you've heard this evening. But as far as I'm concerned, that's up to City Council to decide. Unfortunately, we don't have green building code for commercial buildings yet. So I think that's in the not-too-distant future works, but for now, I am okay with it, with the, with the condition. So are you still there? Yeah, all right. Then I'd like to call for, well, let's see if there's any additional, sure, please.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody else is supportive of this, and I don't have the, the code section that would allow this, but I would want to propose that it close down at 11:00 PM, especially given that we're, we're voting on allowing alcohol sales from these, you know, from other locations and grocery stores in the future. I don't know that, I'm concerned that we're making a decision to allow alcohol sales past 11:00 in the, in a new place where there are none right now in a Lewisville, to my knowledge.
Well, there actually are at the gas station across the street, but alcohol really isn't our, that's the alcohol.
But that's, but how late is the gas station across the street open?
So we, if we can trust Google Maps, they are open 24 hours.
They are as well. So this would not be, okay, I thought this would be the first use.
But, but that doesn't mean alcohol is for sale 24 hours.
Right.
I don't believe our code allows that. I'm quite confident in that.
Okay. You can see where my, some of the, some of my concerns come from.
And actually, one of the other concerns you mentioned of, of empty buildings and crime and that sort, well, that is an issue. That's an issue right now with the empty buildings that we do have in this area. Playing devil's advocate, one could argue that a 24-operation here means there's more eyes on the street, and that would help reduce. I'm not going there with it. I'm just saying for, you know, that, that, you could argue that.
It doesn't sound like anybody else is in agreement with that condition, so, but I am totally supportive of what you suggested about the solar-ready roofs, more sustainability, and even perhaps adding a condition for more charging stations, perhaps like four EV-ready stations, because I think that are, we will show that that can be supported here.
And I, I think the applicant would likely find more likelihood of working its way through City Council approval with, if they were to present with something like that. But, but I'm comfortable with leaving that to council, so. Can I, hey, any additional thoughts? No? All right. Then I'll say, I'll go ahead and move approval of, where is my numbers here?
14?
Yes. Resolution, no, it's not 14, are we? Yes, Resolution 14 Series 22, two, Resolution recommending approval of a planned unit development amendment to allow construction of a new 2,824-square-foot automotive service station and convenience store with eight-pump fueling stations and canopy at 525 McCaslin, with the condition that prior to City Council public hearing, the applicant shall amend the PUD to include the required EV-installed, EV-capable, and EV-ready parking space designation pursuant to Section 17.20.170 of the Lewisville Municipal Code.
Second.
Thank you for the second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Commissioner Hefner?
No.
Commissioner Krantz?
No.
Commissioner Osterman?
Yes.
Chair Brown Eyes?
Yes. The motion carries. I hope you have heard all the community has to offer this evening. Thank you very much. All right, moving on. We're about to wrap up. So with, with the new business discussion, we'll, we don't have to formally move that to next month?
No, no need for a formal motion.
Okay, yeah, thank you. We do hope to address next month the 2023 City Council Work Plan, discussion of that. And I was not prepared to do election of Planning Commission Secretary this evening, especially with only five of us here. So I would like to also push that off to next month. Do we have any additional Planning Commission comments? All right, staff comments?
Just the, we do have some items tentatively scheduled for November 10th. And they are on the agenda. Looks like we have a PUD replat and easement vacation for 1501 South Boulder Road and part of North End, and then Coal Creek Ranch filing three PUD amendment for fences. So we are working with different communities affected by the neighborhoods affected by the Marshall Fire and working on some new fence regulations. So that's the first of those that you will see.
Great. Thank you very much. With that, then, I would motion to adjourn if I could get a second.
Second?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.